This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Call to order the meeting for the zoning board of appeals with City of East Hampton. Today is Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. This is a hybrid meeting, so we do have some participants on Google Meet. At this point, I will ask if there anyone here who would like to speak to anything concerning an item that is not on the agenda for this evening? The agenda this evening is the City of East Hampton seeking an LED sign. And the second applicant is Heavy Culture Cooperative seeking a continuation of their application for a special permit.
Anyone lined if you want to give public comment, you can go ahead and raise your hand. This item's not on the agenda. Seeing any? Okay.
And we do have the minutes from last, was that last week's meeting, last month's meeting?
Last month's meeting, correct.
They simply didn't agree about that.
Right.
So we will, we'll actually table that because we'll have to take a look at that and just make sure that they, they meet everything they're supposed to. So with that, at this point, we will ask for the applicant, which is the City of East Hampton. The East Hampton Fire Department is seeking a special permit for an exemption to an allowable sign area through section 10.04F of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. The sign will be approximately four and a half feet by eight foot in size. LED sign located at 32 Pace and Avenue. The 4.25 acre property is located in the downtown business district, map 53, impersal 33. Chief, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you. Again, my name is Chris Norris, Fire Chief here in the City of East Hampton. And again, we have proposed before this group tonight for an LED sign. The purpose of this LED sign is to build out our initiative of community outreach and education, particularly for fire safety and things of that nature. The intent of this LED sign is in terms of community outreach, to get greater information to the community in terms of check your smoke detectors, check your batteries, car seat installations, candle safety awareness, fire safety awareness. And we thought not only with the LED sign there, the proposal is when you drive in, the first entranceway to the fire station is a grass island to the left. And our thought was it'll be a good location not only to capture the traffic on the roadway, but it would also be facing the bike path.
So it would be located between the bike path and that first driveway? Or between the driveway and your, the apron for the apparatus?
It'll be located between the driveway and the apron of the apparatus.
Okay.
As we started looking at this proposal before you tonight, one of the things we wanted to get ahead of also is in terms of underground utilities, we did have Dixit come out and look at that area. Greg Norman and his crew brought them out and it's cleared in there as well for the two metal poles if approved to put in there as well. So that was the purpose of the LED sign. That's the intent and that's the reason why it's being proposed to be put in that location to capture not only the road traffic, but also the bike traffic as well on the bike path.
Okay. And it is, so it, it, the sign, the application says four and a half feet by eight feet. It's actually only going to be three foot by eight feet?
No, no, I'm sorry, that was.
Portion? Or is the East Hampton Public Safety Board complex that constant?
Yeah, so it's a great question. The sign itself is going to be three feet high by eight feet wide. And then they have on, on the top of what they call a topper. And that topper is another 18 inches high across eight feet wide.
And is that, is that top section constant? Like static, is it lit?
It is.
Okay.
So in terms of the sign and what would be changing for information would be the three by eight section.
Okay. That, that's, that's kind of, you know, because that was, that was part of the contention when the ordinance was written. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay.
Great question. Is the foot and a half underneath, is that a pedestal?
The foot and a half underneath is what they call a skirt, just to hide the metal post that it actually sits on.
Okay.
Okay. It's more for study purposes than anything.
All right. And the, the intent is to, the city's going to, you know, take care of the whole thing. The, I guess, you know, hours of operation 24/7?
It'll be 24/7.
It will be 24/7. Okay. And is it, you know, dimmable in any sort or?
It is, yes.
Okay. So would it be dimmed at night to?
To help diminish the?
Correct. Okay.
Yep.
On photosome or some sort to?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Other questions for the board members to the applicant?
I'm just, I'm just looking at the ordinance. It, you said that this falls under section 10.04F, which is a traffic or directional sign for the safety and direction of residents, employees, customers, and visitors. Because there's also this whole thing about an electronic message center, which I feel like this is, and has a petition in 2023 as an exemption for municipal property saying that this doesn't apply as municipal property.
Okay.
Correct. So that section there doesn't say anything about the sign size? So for an electric mess that if it fit within the regular sign dimensions by right, we wouldn't be here.
It would be here just by size. The size exceeds the, the, by right.
Correct. That's what requires the special permit.
Okay. All right. But the, the intent of the ordinance was initially that any, any city facility that wanted to put up a sign by right would be able to put up a sign?
Correct. An LED sign specifically could do that by right.
Okay. Offhand, do we know how large the sign is that was installed at Maple?
School? Yeah, that's a good question.
I do not know that offhand.
I would love to be able to say I know because I was on the board, but I don't know. So is comparable, do you think? I, I, I don't know.
I vote without knowing the exact measurements. I would say it's relatively comparable. And when we were reaching out to companies who do these as part of their normal business operations, this is a typical traditional size for any public safety building as well. You know, the concern obviously is it's a balance between trying to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing, but also big enough so people can see the information on it as well.
And it's going to be set back away from the road far enough that?
Correct.
Your visibility and people's visibility of your equipment leaving will not be interfered with.
Correct. What we actually did, we did a mock-up using a piece of plywood just last week, just to give us a sense and idea, not only for when we had Dixit come out, but also just the concerns with the new light, with the new sidewalks right there. And we wanted to make sure it didn't keep any visibility on there as well for the public safety officials.
Any other questions for the applicant before we open it up to the public? All right. Is there anyone here who would like to, has any questions or comments concerning the application?
Yeah, Dave Gardner, Building Commissioner, I just want to say that this is allowed by right, signs absolutely allowed by right, LED portion. The rest of it is just here for the size of the sign. That's all it is.
All right. All right. Anyone else? Turning to the applicant. All right. With that said, we will close the public hearing. Motion to close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second. Any opposed? Okay. Discussion among the board?
Sure.
Very straightforward. Okay. Somebody make a motion. All right, well. Make a motion to approve the City of East Hampton seeking a special permit for exemption from the allowable sign area through section 10.02F of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. Sign will be approximately four and a half by eight foot size. LED signage located at 32 Pace and Avenue. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
We'll write it out.
Thank you so much. If any other questions, come on, please reach out.
Absolutely.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
We're moving a little extra. Let me see if many people in the hallway looking up, set up some more chairs.
I was gonna say, we don't need them either.
Yeah, we're gonna, someone's gonna be here with the table, guys. Going this way?
Yep.
All.
I know, we just thought. Sitting in the bank, ready to go. Didn't see ever wonder how much we've done in our little.
Just make sure they delete the space between East and Ham.
I know, wait. I know this stuff. I still hope we didn't have to say that. Feel really good.
It's just that, you know, East Hampton, Connecticut is two words.
Yeah.
Yeah. So at this point, we will open the continued hearing from November 20th of Heavy Culture Cooperative. The applicant is seeking a special permit to operate in the bar, which is, which requires a special permit as listed in table 10, 5.1 Retail and Services-13. The property is located in the neighborhood Business Zoning District at 1 North Hampton Street, map 51, lot 29. Also, I believe at our last meeting, we had kind of put together a, a list of questions and concerns that the board has. And at this point, I will ask that the applicant please step forward or stand or move to the side so we all know who's talking and we can hear how you've addressed the concerns.
Certainly. So my, my understanding is that the board had asked that we submit a site plan.
Yeah.
So we engaged with a registered design professional to provide that plan. There are no extensive renovations planned for the near term, future. What you see there are two phases of potential future build out. Phase one being essentially the building as is. Phase two would involve knocking down or modifying a wall in between the two larger rooms on the first floor. And then potentially a third construction phase we could go through would be to make changes to the parking lot and the cuts to the road, which might make sense when the city goes about changing the layout of the rotary. But essentially, what we learned through having the architect inspect, go through the building and develop plans is that there are no major changes required. And he is in agreement that we would be meeting all applicable codes if we were to continue operating this building Class B as it was, as it was classified in the past.
Okay. So the change of use by a design professional would meet the acceptable?
Yes. Yeah, because the.
Sustainability?
Yes. Especially the biggest limiting factor in that case is the capacity. If the capacity goes over 49, that requires a change, I believe to an A2. But under 49, we can continue operating Class B.
Okay. So 49 is the, is the. Okay. Um. In looking at your site plan, you said you would look to adjust the curb cuts at the time when a, any modification or renovation to the rotary were to take place. And something I am concerned about is the secondary entrance to the parking lot on Lyman's Avenue. That, that is going to create an exit that does not lead to potentially where anyone would want to exit to. You can, you go ahead and sit down.
And those, the, you know, don't show it.
Right. Because the, the satellite view, the aerial view you have clearly shows curb cut on Lyman Avenue.
So are you, are you concerned that we would, that we would no longer have?
No.
The cut that's already there in the satellite?
I, I, but your, your new, your proposed new layout of 43 cars does not show that cut?
Yes.
And I think that in an effort to address concerns from the residents on Lyman Avenue approach and, and that, I think that we would want that closed off.
Like not phase three, like earlier in the project instead of waiting until?
Oh, okay. I understand.
So like, we like what you've done, we just want you to do it sooner.
Yeah. 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 The curb, at least that part of. The addressing on, on the rotary, that, that's.
Okay.
That's not of greater, grave concern. My greater concern is the curb cut that's on Lyman Avenue.
Right.
And blocking that off.
Okay. Yeah, certainly. I'll have to speak with Mr. Wilson about it, but that seems perfectly reasonable.
Yeah. Jersey barriers, something, something.
Put a ballers on it sometimes.
I mean, if, yeah, if, if needed, that's a, that's a cost that we'd be willing to bear if that's required to.
Just in looking, in looking at this just initially. Um.
But that's bad.
Yeah. At one point in our previous meeting, you had discussed using the rear exit of the, of the room, which right now has a kind of a vestibule around it as a, an exit for people who, I think you said would go out and smoke or something like that? Or was that just, that's emergency egress only?
That would be emergency egress only to keep people away from the, the houses behind the building.
You're, you're, you're.
We'd like them to be out more towards the road where it's, where they're more visible and further away from.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. Because then my concern was is if your plan is to remove that and now we've lost the, the sound buffer in the, in the vestibule.
One of the things in there.
Oh.
Other, other questions from the board?
Um. So I think I see some squiggles that are supposed to resemble soundproofing. Is there anything we should know about, about the soundproofing since last time? I just know that that is a topic that's on folks' minds.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if you're just referring to what's.
It might just be.
The X's in the, in the walls there. Yeah, I think you're just seeing the windows.
Okay.
So we're planning to stick with our previous plan of, of plugging, constructing window plugs and sealing that off so there won't be sound transmission through the windows.
Yeah, I think the squiggles are just signifying a rigid wall.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yep. Okay. Do you have any questions? Um. You have an ADA, there's an ADA compliant bathroom. So plus multiple other bathrooms.
And a ramp.
And a ramp. I mean, the building was brought up to ADA code, I'm sure at some point, so.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're fortunate with there previously having been a bar in that space. Everything is as largely as it needs to be.
Yep. Okay. Right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, me.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Um. At this point, I will, we are going to, we have a couple of letters that we've received. We received a, a letter from the East Hampton EDIC, East Hampton Development and Astro Commission, wishing to lend support to the proposal. There's an verbiage that, you know, before this, that it falls in line with the citywide commitment to supporting the farts. There was another letter from, that we received from. Owen Zaret, Representative Zaret stating his, his support for it. Are there any other letters that I missed, Dylan?
I don't believe so since the last meeting, I think it was those two. If there were any, they would have been uploaded to the website. I know I've distributed those folks and checking now, but I believe that was that.
So with that said. We will open it up for public comment. What I will ask is that there was a, a number of questions and, and concerns, things that were brought up in our last meeting. I will ask that we don't go ahead and just repeat the same things over again. If you have a new concern, a new topic, something that you feel will be pertinent in the decision-making process, you, we locally hear from the public, but I would just like to be able to. I'd hear the same thing over and over again. All right. So at this point, we will open it to the public. All right. We will ask that you state your name and your address when you go.
Hi, my name is Alexi Levine. I'm the current owner of the building and I operated the massage school there. And I just wanted to say, we've talked to some people who wanted to buy the building and they were all fairly benign uses, but none of them seem to be really a community serving asset like these guys are. And we personally would love to see it go to them. And when we were operating it as the massage school up until two years ago, we just moved closer to where we live and we found a building more suited to us. We had to have it inspected every year by the building department and the fire department. And everything was rigorously kept to code for the same standard.
Hi, Dave Gardner, Building Commissioner. I think it's a great idea as well. We do, I and fire prevention officer have some concerns about certain features that you've spoken about. The one has to do with soundproofing and doing window plugs. There are portions of the building code that address rooms or windows, spaces that have no windows. And the reason for that is emergency escape or rescue openings. So the concern is with the window plugs, I think you're calling them, is that they need to be readily removable by anybody who might be occupying the space without any special knowledge or tools. So whatever the design is there that has to meet that design, the windows also have to be, well, at least one every 50 feet around the perimeter of the space has to be openable. So that's just, there's some other concerns about the building maybe before you open. And I just heard this gentleman say that it's been inspected every year by the building department, but there, there may be, and I did look at it, it looked like the most recent was 2019.
Oh, I'm sure we did it more recently than that.
Yes. That's, yeah, most recent when I could find it. I know it's, it's stating an occupant load of 48 downstairs. The other concern has to do with the occupant load upstairs and the, how the downstairs communicates with the upstairs because of course, if it's used, the second floor, and then that's the occupant load, well, now you're over 49, right? For the space. So just some kind of, I just speak to the state building inspector about this, how that might work. And there's, there needs to be some sort of, until you get to phase two or phase three, whatever it is, a means of isolating the second floor. So entry to it, not out of it, but, but into it from the downstairs or from the first level during this first phase can't be achieved. In other words, you can't have people going upstairs. You can never set up a situation where somebody can't get out of a space. But in this case, it has to be set up so you can't have people downstairs wander upstairs and stuff like that.
Okay. That sounds perfectly reasonable.
Sorry. I'm Nicole, 123 Park Street. We are aware that the entire building is 49 capacity and, but we are just renting the downstairs. So whenever we're going to be doing events there, there will be someone counting how many people are entering the building and exiting. So while we're doing things, we're, we will be very conscious of other people in the building.
Um, I think, I think the, the restriction of use to second floor would fall under the building owner. Not the tenant. And I know that there was, there was some question that we did ask you to research concerning, you know, whether, because there's this, this kind of third party leasing situation where, you know, you know, you've, you've agreed to sell the building to yourself and then, but you're leasing it temporarily from Alexi, but then you're shifting your lease to the new owner and whether the application could actually be approved. And, and, but, but that's, we'll, we'll get to that next. But, you know, I just, you know, the, the restriction of use within the building, if you were only leasing the first floor, that I think we, my understanding that they would only be responsible for the occupancy of the first floor, but the building owner would be responsible for restricting the access to the second floor. With.
Well, according to, so the whole building is a B use and, and one of the reasons the, it is a B use is because of the, not allowing the bar area to go to, to increase in occupancy, you know, the occupant load.
Right.
So that's the concern, you know, of, there is a way to do this, you know, and that is putting in a doorway to the second floor, could be a key card or anything like that. So I mean, so that random people coming to the bar, for instance, can't just walk through the door.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Be something that seems perfectly reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. With them closed, or cameras? Like if they can see what's upstairs on a, on their phone, would that?
Well, perhaps, but see, it becomes a kind of a policing nightmare for, you know, fire departments or anybody else. What do you?
We could put it in the door. That's, that's. No redil. That costs the same.
Me and this Kelsey Giller, and I'm a resident at 912 Dwight Street. We're a part of the Heavy Culture Cooperative and have gotten to see their establishment and growth. And I have a wide knowledge of building code. And we are very much dedicated to enhancing the building. This was an educational space that educated many individuals with a trade. Worked as a respected business for many years and was consistently an inspector until 2019. And we also have to take into account things that occurred with the change operation, the need to continue to own that space. And we have a lot of hopeful growth opportunities that go far beyond just purchase of this building. And we are leasing the space, but we're all owners of this cooperative. We all have our dedications in this community because we spend a lot of time here. Recently, I was really fond of them over at the Blasky Club. You know, we're often very warmly welcomed in very random spaces that. We are dedication to our community. We love all the grants and building restoration. And our hope is that we continue to enhance that building and continue to provide lots of different levels of operation, things we can do within the building because how does this still?
All right. Excuse me. I will, I will ask that, you know, you address the board? Okay. Yeah, I understand he's the building commissioner, but yeah, but we're, we're the deciding factors, not him.
That's okay.
Yes, as the, as the Heavy Culture Cooperative, this is community, we spend a lot of time and are dedicated to creating safe, inclusive spaces that we also hope to improve every time that we're in, we're operating. And then we've helped various events now in lots of different locations. And I see the business. Projective that they operate with and it's very community-based. And that Heavy Culture Cooperative doesn't just include black music, it includes art and culture and community. And that's what we're all about, but also operating in the right way of removing restorations and improvements on the buildings that should are, like should be made along the code and making sure the safety. making sure it's a safe accessible space that has safe exit entry and accessibility.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Hello, um, my name is Ama Charlesworth and I live in East Hampton. Um, I feel, um, some concern about the, the window plug aspect and soundproofing aspect. Um, I'm a fan of heavy metal and I'm excited that there is going to be a cooperative here. I think this is fantastic for the arts. Um, but I feel a lot of concern and, um, I don't really understand how just window plugs alone would be enough to mitigate the level of sound and the type of bass frequencies that come from heavy metal, if that's the only proposed soundproofing. Um, so I'd like to understand, um, why that was, um, the only soundproofing proposed, because I know that bass frequencies, especially through brick, can travel very far. And with the residential areas being around, I think it's very understandable that people have a lot of concerns around the sound and that getting to their houses and, um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, open up the folks online.
Sure.
If anyone's on there.
There will be more, yes.
Okay. Uh, if anyone online would like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature and I can go ahead and give you the ability to speak. Seen anyone?
Hi, I'm David Chu. And I'm twenty-five Lyman Ave, East Hampton. Zoning ordinance, section ten twenty-seven noise says, excessive noise at unreasonable hours shall be required to be muffled so as not to be objectionable to the intermittence, beat frequency, shrillness, or volume. Every home and building owner in the area would find the sounds emanating from this bar to be objectionable or even if muffled, not only would low frequency beats escape anyway, every time a door opens, every time an inebriated person or group shouts and laughs, objectionable sounds would reverberate through an otherwise very quiet neighborhood. In answers to some of the apples to oranges arguably referred, please understand the following. Trucks passing are not the same as heavy metal happening late into the evening. Trucks pass by and are gone and they go, and they go home at the end of the workday. The sound of any traffic on Main Street is not the same thing as the constant beat of low frequencies, nor the fuller sounds that emanate from the building every time the door is opened. The Old Town Hall was built as a venue. It's always been a venue. Anyone buying or renting there has long known that performances happened there. But Memorial Hall has always been a quiet building for education with one disastrous stint as a failing bar. It is a quiet neighborhood, especially at night. And the building is surrounded by residences. It's unconscionable to allow such a violently radical change in use. I strenuously object to the approval of this project. But if it is approved, we would need a sound barrier twenty feet tall like they have on the highways to protect our upstairs rooms. We would need light pollution mitigation, parking restrictions in Lyman Ave, and baffles in the windows, not just some, because the building is effectively a tympanic resonator. Thank you for listening. Please deny the application.
I'm Juan Hsu, president of the Town Common Condo Association at twenty-five through thirty-one Lyman Ave in East Hampton. As last time, I speak for the four individually owned units in our condo because the owner of one is experiencing anxiety about this. So debilitating, she cannot speak in a public forum. In another unit, both owners are in the hospital and so unable to defend their right to the peaceful enjoyment of their home. The third unit is owned by a man in the medical field who has the usual crazy hours, so he can't be here. Please understand that in a real estate market, the mere perception of a neighborhood with a heavy metal music bar does harm. This is how the loss of tens of thousands of dollars of home and business property value happens. Given two perfectly fine funeral homes in the town, would you choose to do business with the one situated right next to a heavy metal bar? What would happen to your home values if a heavy metal music bar were moved in next to your home? Would you ever choose to purchase or rent next door to a heavy metal bar? If not, these are your reasons for denying. I want to emphasize that it's perception that changes the market. If this application were to be approved, we would automatically be trapped because we couldn't sell at a price that would give us equivalent housing anywhere else in this difficult market. In the past month, I've talked to dozens of people, friends and strangers alike, including a good number of real estate professionals. When I tell them a heavy metal music co-op bar wants to open adjacent to us, the look on their faces, every single one of them, is immediate horror. In the East Hampton Council on Agent Planning Study published in October two thousand eighteen, in the recommendation section on page seventy-two, the first recommendation is this. Devise and strengthen programs that address economic security concerns among older East Hampton residents. This doesn't say to greenlight applications that create economic security concerns where before there had been none. I cannot emphasize how incredibly stressful this month has been for all of us in our building. I won't go on with any more details. It's a sad, sad story you don't need to hear. But the fact that a mere handful of residents and business owners might be seriously harmed by the approval of this application reminds me of the old philosophy class puzzle. Would you kill one dog to save one man's life? How about two dogs? How many dogs would you be willing to kill to save one man's life? And are we the dogs? Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of these questions. Please deny the application.
Hi, uh, I'm on Island three fifty-five Abbott Street in Springfield, Massachusetts, and uh, I also serve on the Board of Directors for the Heavy Culture Cooperative. Um, obviously the noise or the, that people expect has been a consistent concern among the others. Um, I'm going to reiterate our commitment to soundproofing that room to minimize any transmission of noise. Excuse me, outside of the venue, um, but, uh, today we did come prepared with some data that we hope will alleviate the concerns of the abutters. Uh, recently, there was a show at the Marigold Theater down the road on Cottage Street on, uh, November twenty-seventh, the day before Thanksgiving. Uh, we had a member of our co-op, Brian Westbrook, take some sound readings inside and at various locations outside the venue uh, to get a sense for how much noise actually comes out of that building. And the Marigold is comparable to the property at One North Hampton in a number of key ways. Uh, it is a brick building. It has a number of very large glass windows. Uh, it has residential properties that are at very close proximity. Um, it was also not a music venue prior to opening. Uh, my understanding is that it was the home to Off the Map Tattoo, and prior to that, it was a movie theater. Um, perhaps most importantly is that the Marigold has almost no soundproofing in it whatsoever. There is a curtain behind the stage uh, that may offer some isolation. I don't have the expertise to comment on that. Um, but the rest of the building has no purpose-built soundproofing whatsoever. Uh, Brian took measurements inside the Marigold uh, facing the stage directly in front of the sound booth. Uh, the peak decibel reading came in at a hundred and three point two decibels. Uh, he then went outside the back door, which is adjacent to the sound booth where the bands loaded. There's also a couple of large glass windows near that door. Uh, standing outside the building, taking that same reading, the decibel reading drops to sixty-seven decibels peak from what I could see on his notes. Uh, he also took readings outside the front door of the Marigold on Cottage Street. Uh, the peak sound reading I could see on the video he took was sixty-seven point four decibels, and that was, uh, with traffic driving down the street as well. Um, he also spoke a few brief sentences at normal conversational volume, uh, which caused the reading to peak to seventy-four point one. So it did go up a little bit. Um, he took some readings further away at the end of the parking lot near Orchard Street. Uh, that came in at around fifty-two decibels. He then went to the corner of Orchard and Pine Street. Um, that came in at forty-five, uh, but in the video we took, um, that I watched, and I'd be happy to show the board on my phone as well, the noise from the venue. At all, that to me just seems like ambient outside noise that the decibel reader was picking up. Um, last month at the meeting, I did join remotely and there was, uh, much conversation about the noise. I believe Tim brought up the sound of a truck driving down the road, which I think was, uh, he measured it over a hundred decibels, if I remember.
Correct.
I just want to emphasize, we're not talking about the constant noise of a truck. We are talking about standing outside the building, the noise from the music will be about as loud as a face-to-face conversation with another person. And if you are inside another nearby building, like your home, maybe with the TV on, I, I genuinely don't think that you will even perceive what is happening inside the room, even if the band is loud. And that is if we did nothing to the building to soundproof it. Again, we are willing to commit to soundproofing that room, not just because it will isolate the outside from the noise, but because it will also make the sound inside of the room better for the audience. Like, we do not want to be a nuisance neighbor whatsoever, and we will do whatever we can to fulfill our vision in that space while keeping the neighbors happy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, there was a hand raised online. It's still up there. So Patrick, uh, did you still want to speak? So raise your hand. All right, Patrick should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself. Yep. Yeah, it's on his, on PS on mute.
How about now?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, my name is Pat French. Um, I'm, uh, I live in Holyoke. I'm a member of the Heavy Culture Co-op. Um, I just wanted to very quickly emphasize, um, that comparing what we're trying to do to killing dogs is putting that on the record is not very cool. And I find that to be very inappropriate in this meeting. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else in the audience have anything they'd like to say?
Joe Pasternak, Seventh Pleasant Street. I'm the owner and, uh, and Ninety Pleasant Street also, owner of Boucher Bryant Funeral Home. Um, everything that I have to say is about two and a half minutes is different than what I said last time. Uh, but I've had a lot of thinking to do. Um, before I started, I'd like to just say, I really like the people of Thick. Uh, they're wonderful people, lovely people. I find them to be something that will be a positive attribute to our community. But with that in hand, um, I still, uh, take this very seriously. Last meeting, I heard from Mr. Rob. Uh, we talked for over ten minutes and I just heard another, um, long talk about decibels and things like that. Um, and then I guess before I started, I should have, I'm sorry, threw the chair, I should have asked, are there new plans for my registered um, architect or that were submitted? When were they posted?
Uh, it would have been.
Twelve thirteen?
They would have been posted to the website yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yeah.
We'll see them. I haven't had time to review. So it's, and, and did he or she certify occupancy for that? I don't think, I can't review it now. I don't want to.
No, the, the occupancy is, is forty-nine, correct?
Yes.
That hasn't changed.
That does not change.
So did, did they certify that? Because in order, certainly occupancy doesn't go by a manly, pammy number, and I'm sure the building commissioner will also do this. Good, I'll so call Boston, and I am also a commercial developer. And I have, have also, uh, offered my time and talent for free, Mr. Rob, and also the Heavy Metal Consortium, uh, or Thick, as I should say, um, the finance space, like the mills, something that's more industrial, more appropriate. Um, so let me just think to my script so I don't waste time. Uh, we talked about the acoustic material that will cover all the windows. That's been mentioned several times tonight. So once again, I, I don't want to stand here as a funeral director. I want to stand here as a business person and hopefully, you know, give my feeling for this and also as a, as a licensed professional engineer. Um, I, I feel that there's grave concern here. Uh, you're talking about covering windows. I mentioned, or the building inspector mentioned about them being easily removed. If anyone here has ever been in a fire, you can't get a door open quick enough, even if there's a panic button on it to get out. This is a very haphazard deal, and I don't mean to be personal with you folks. It seems like they're just trying to make this fit in this whole building. To the owner, by your neighbor, uh, the building is very poor shape. Um, it has not been kept though. If any of you folks have walked that property or looked at the building, there are considerable repairs there. I don't see, and I'm going to look at that plan and study it very carefully. Um, I don't see any effort that's gone into this that has been consistent with a business that's going to succeed there. There's too many things at question. The space really doesn't work. Um, once again, I think there's plans on file, but the last plans, and I still think it's on file, uh, does have one of the old plans listed at eighty-nine for their occupancy. Uh, it also goes by the whole building, as the building inspector says. And I am also serving as a licensed commissioner for, I don't know, five or six years in check of eight, an alcohol licensed commissioner. If you own and operate a bar, bars have to be under, uh, the nightclub rules of Massachusetts. And, uh, chapter one building code will also, uh, do a, a design study for, uh, the, the building. I don't know if that's what is at hand there. Uh, once again, I didn't have enough time to review it. Um, but my, my question is that if there's communal bathrooms outside this space, you have to lock the bar space off, and the bar space has to have their own bathroom. So if those bathrooms are going to be used for upstairs or downstairs, everything in that building is quite old. Um, I have grave concerns over that. The building is in absolutely horrible condition. Um, the outside lighting is poor at best. And, um, the, the parking lot is hazardily walkable. I'd be, I'd be shocked if they can get an insurance, um, a binder on that property. So I'm asking if, um, the, there is a certified site plan, um, I'd like to see it. Um, if you, um, cut through a mutual space, communal bathrooms, and operating a bar for a liquor establishment, to my knowledge, as a licensed commissioner, alcohol license is not acceptable. And there are just so many questions with this space that I just feel it's not appropriate. Um, I wish these folks well. I'm welcome. Uh, I'm happy to help them in any manner that I can, but I am asking this board to deny this permit. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? For the applicant?
We have a, uh, Dan Constantine, uh, by Governor Dan Constantine would like to speak.
Yep. Yep.
Ben should be able to unmute.
You hear me okay? Okay, so first I apologize for being late. I had to go out on a call. Um, so, um, sorry if something gets repeated. Uh, just, uh, one concern I just want to bring up as far as safety, because that's, that's my job, uh, from a fire safety standpoint. Um, if, if this were to get approved, um, it would go through the process. Uh, if, if the process would, would deem that it would not need a fire alarm system by code, um, probably not a sprinkler system. Uh, you know, the fire department would, would really strongly recommend and would hope that uh, they would put in a fire alarm system at least. Um, because this is going to be, uh, um, a music venue that serves alcohol. Uh, I think it's imperative, uh, as, as a safety component of the building uh, for the occupants to have a, a commercial fire alarm system in there. Um, even if, uh, for some reason, uh, under the building code or under the occupancy, it's, it's not required. Um, you know, I don't have to go on about, you know, some of the tragedies that have happened. We we all, we all know about those, uh, in certain nightclubs. And yes, there were a lot more people in there. Um, but they were bigger venues. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to kind of convey that, uh, to you folks, uh, of, of, of our concerns uh, to have that. And also the important thing is with the fire alarm system is to have interconnection with the stage. Uh, that's really important too. Um, because when something happens and you can't hear the fire alarm, um, there needs to be interconnection, which would be if the fire alarm were to go off, um, then it would shut down the, um, the power to the amplifiers and the music and, and bring up the house lights, um, to alert people that there's something going on in the building, uh, and they need to evacuate. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of put that out there as, as our concerns uh, to, if this were, you know, to move forward, that we'd, um, you know, depending on the code, what it would require or not require, uh, that we definitely at least would want a, a fire alarm system in there. Um, even if the code, uh, you know, didn't require. It'd be great to have a sprinkler system, but you know, again, that's, uh, I know expense and that's uh, would fall into the code too, but, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If the care would, just one more comment. Okay. So, um, you know, and just, once again, just in common sense and overall, you know, bands are loud, I get it. Um, but when you think of this thick, and it seems like you are growing and you're doing a great job and you're wonderful people. Um, but there's, last time I think Mr. Rob said you're, you're at a hundred and thirteen, hundred and twenty.
I want to restrict, yeah.
Um, they won't be able to meet in their own building. They can't go in there for a meeting. Does that make sense? It just seems to be a bad fit. My gut instinct is, and I know I have a bias and I'll admit to that. My gut instinct is this is a really bad fit. Um, and I pray that nothing bad happens there. Thank you.
This went to, um, for what, uh, fire, uh, prevention officer said. We, we talked about that earlier today. Um, even if, uh, I haven't, uh, I was kind of appalled that the building did not have a fire alarm system already, you know, so. And that goes a long way, especially if you're going to expand. You will need it, definitely. And having something that's a monitored system is not just something that sounds and everybody runs out of the building and notifies the fire department as well. So you can take care of these things really fast. May as well get that, I mean, if, if this moves forward. Um, and I'm also thinking that the, the zoning board of appeals, uh, just speaking to, to the board, uh, wouldn't expect the decision to include all of the things that are actually going to be needed uh, for this building to actually get a certificate of occupancy for the use. So, but bringing all this stuff up now, you know, would certainly, uh, you know, in the right direction. And I, I haven't been in the building. And I understand it has been inspected every year, but I don't know why.
And Constantine was the last person you could ask him. I think it was like twenty twenty-two, maybe was the last time.
Yeah, but the building department, I, I don't know if it was something that was, uh, just invited to building department. You, you requested an inspection.
No, we were, we're required as a trade school to have it inspected and approved by the fire and building department. Great school. Right, but since you, you vacated the school.
Two years ago.
Yeah, at that point.
So anybody still in high school going to that school? Is that what it was?
It's a, we're a trade school. We train people to be massage therapists and licensed by the state. They have to be eighteen years of old.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. You know, according to building code, when you're out of high school, now to be used. That's why the building is a B use. We don't ordinarily inspect. Be used.
Just for our license as a trade.
For your license. That's what I, yeah, okay. That's what I was trying to get to. You requested it. You needed it.
We were compelled to.
You were compelled to, yeah, but not by the building department. Building department, so we're like filled it.
All right. Is there anyone else who has anything they would like to add?
One more online here, uh, Matt Steinberg. I'm going to go ahead. All right, I just sent the uh, coin and he's lowered his hand, so I don't know if he would like to speak. Do you want to speak again? Raise your hand, but continue through the room.
Hi, I'm Ben Lesko, twenty-one, Miami and a half. Um, I, first I want to say I don't, I don't have a problem with Thicke for being what it is. I've listened to heavy metal my whole life and I'm older than I look. I, I have to say, I do, as, as a, as an almost direct neighbor, Lonnie and Dave are right in between us and that building. I do have the same concerns about noise, about automobile traffic, foot traffic, lighting, uh, uh, access and egress. I'm also a firefighter here in town. That it, this concerns me from the perspective of neighbor and a firefighter, but but more, more specifically, we, we haven't been able to, at least I haven't been able to find anything very specific in terms of zoning ordinances, in terms of noise ordinances. They, as Dave mentioned, they, they use the words excessive at an unreasonable hour. Another one simply states, any offensive vibration is prohibited. What, can you tell me what that means?
What that means is the city of East Hampton has no noise ordinance.
That, that concerns me. And again.
It's, it has concerned me since the day I sat in this chair.
Yeah. It seems like you guys did your job over at Marigold measuring decibels. I'd like the city to do its job and have an ordinance.
And unfortunately, we only enforce the ordinances or the appeal of the ordinance. The city council is who writes ordinance.
Okay.
And, and that is where it starts. And I, I think we have made it.
Nowhere.
Yeah, we have made concerns known multiple times. It's not, it does not seem to be a priority of the city council.
Okay, well, as, as the zoning board, we're sitting here tonight, and you, you have the authority to do your job.
We do.
And again, I've, I said Thicke's done their job. And it, without, without any specific ordinance, like how, how are they supposed to know what they need to do to mitigate sound? How are we supposed to have any recourse if we find something offensive? Maybe it isn't offensive and we're wrong, but there's no number to point to.
You can figure that out. Let me know. Because, and, and I don't mean to make.
You want me to figure it out?
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you that the, the concern that has been brought forward by the residents and the promises that have been brought forward by the applicants are are, they, they, they're both very true and very viable. But the problem we have is I don't know if there's a quantitative number or value, decibel value, or, or anything that we can say meets the requirement. That is where I, that's, that's how I look at it right now.
Okay, well, I, I don't want to stand up here and argue with you. There be a, a, yeah.
Yeah.
In addition to the.
Well, and so that what we can do.
Include some specifics?
Yeah, so what we have is we have the ability in make, in the making of a decision. If we were to approve a decision or, or a decision is, is founded, we have the right to put in conditions which basically say that at a certain sound level will be met at this time of day, night, whatever it is, at this proximity to the building. It then puts the onus back on the applicant to meet that requirement, because we've basically said, here are the rules. And if you don't play by the rules, then the zoning commissioner goes, these are the rules. The zoning board said those were the rules, and you're not following the rules. So then he he shuts them down. So that is, that is the, that's the right that we have. And what we have to do is we have to try to balance the growth of the city with the residents and owners of the city. And try to figure out how we can make that, them both come together and grow and be successful and peacefully coexist. So that's, that's our challenge.
I'll say. May I ask a question?
Okay.
Um, would there be a way to limit the hours such that after a certain hour, say nine P M? As somebody who can do the measurements could tell within a certain number of feet of the building that there were no low frequency vibrations making it through into the nearby buildings? Would that, could that be codified?
That, and, and here is, here is the challenge that I have, and I think everyone on this board has, is we're not sound engineers. And we need to make the decision easy enough to quantify that you can read it and understand it and know, hey, this isn't right. And they can read it and understand it, know it, it isn't right, or the building commissioner can enforce it by a measure. So that's, that's where we have to sit here and try to come up with a decision to make it all work, if, if we're going to.
It may be that we, it's part of our condition, say, okay, at X hour, the, the decibels shouldn't, can't exceed this number at this distance from the building.
Right.
And I mean, if they do, then, then you have recourse.
But does decibels include the low frequencies?
I think that gets, that gets a little bit more difficult to.
That's the real worry.
So this is, this is where I know we have, we have funds in our budget for consultant, for consultant fees. Or, or the ability to come up and help draft a decision that will make it understandable, because it's, it's beyond my, my purview or, or expertise to be able to say, you know, what is an acceptable decibel level? Because, you know, frequency, sound wave, and volume are two different things. And I think we all, well, everyone in this room will agree on that.
Yes.
Okay, and, and we're not going to be naive about it. Okay, we, you pull up next to a vehicle and you hear the bass going and you hear it, it sounds like the car's rattling apart. In agreeing with, you know, the next door neighbor, um, I'm, I'm concerned about the structural feasibility of the building, be able to withstand those vibrations. There again, that's their problem.
I'm looking, and it does appear that there are ways that you can measure frequency, decibel in relation to frequency. So.
If that could be put in a, in a form such, such that a potential buyer asking questions about what, what about that place next door? We can say the city law says, or the ordinance, excuse me, says these are the limits, so they know what they're buying. But as it is, you understand, the perception is already out there and we are already harmed.
So, so I guess at this point, if there's no new information, we will close the public hearing.
We might, if, if we're, if the board feels that has enough information to make a decision.
Well, and then maybe we won't. Maybe let's, can we, can we?
You can just move to board discussion.
Board discussion.
Within the public hearing, so it can, can still be continued.
Okay, let's do that then, yeah. Okay, so, you know, obviously if we have more questions and concerns, we're going to we're going to ask, you know, we're going to want to know. Um, I think the, the concerns that the neighbors have are viable.
Certainly viable, certainly. Yeah, I mean, it's.
There's no way, there's no way to quantify it.
Discussion closed now, so it's just us?
It's just us. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if you're going to try to set some kind of, uh, levels on it, then who, who's going to do that and then who's going to enforce it? You're going to go out at night when she calls and says, I can hear that in my house where you're meter and read it and then go in there and shut them down? It's not, it's not up to us. We can't, that's a.
No, no, it wouldn't be up to us.
Have to pass, city council have to pass ordinances saying what the acceptable levels are outside of a building. And without that, I don't think there's anything we can do about it.
Well, we do have the ability to do conditions.
We do have the ability to do conditions.
And I think in this, one thing I've been struck by with these last two meetings is that Thicke have been seeming to bend over backwards to be good neighbors. Uh, and every thing that I've heard from each one of the people affiliated with, who spoke and saying, we want to be good neighbors. They already turned down, uh, other potentially better locations, because they would not be able to be good neighbors there. And I'm, I, if, if there is a way that we can add some comfort to the neighbors by giving them some recourse, if if they're not able to keep things as quiet as, uh, as they hope to. Um, if there is a way we can do that, then I think we should, because as I've said, these, this group really wants to be good neighbors. Uh, but it's also important for the city, for its development, I think, to have them here. So I think our homework is to figure out a way that we can put a condition on it that's a viable condition that is not too difficult for them to stand by, and it's also not too difficult for them to, uh, use i- i- as recourse if they need it.
Nice thought, but I don't see how it's possible. And that's, you got to have an ordinance, got to make it a, a law, and this is what the law says. So then if you violate the law, then.
Yeah, but if they.
You call the cops, then, and they can respond.
If we have it in our, as a condition in our decision, no different than we said in other decisions where the applicant couldn't go on the neighbor's property to build a, uh, and renovate a garage. Um, we've made other decisions where we've put conditions in there that are very restrictive.
Yeah, and hard to enforce.
Difficult to enforce.
Sort of an honor system to a certain degree.
Yeah, and, and I think that it, let's face it, it only behooves the applicant to, to go further than we've asked.
For that, yeah.
Yeah.
To get them to do, to, to get them to be the neighbor they want to be.
Can I ask the applicant a question real quick?
Yes, yeah.
Sort of on the side, but also sort of not. So y'all mentioned Marigold, and y'all have seen me in Marigold. I go to Marigold. But something I have always found about Marigold is that inside the sound level is high. It is a hot space, and you yourself measured one oh three decibels. And to me, from a public safety perspective, I think that's too, I think that's too loud for anyone to be existing in. Are y'all planning on pumping a hundred plus decibels inside?
So, um, I, uh, I used to teach, uh, acoustics uh, and, and audio theory at the college level, so how much time do you have? We could go as deep as you want to go. Um, but, um, a big, uh, a big part of what makes the Marigold sound that way, and I agree. Sound that way, and I agree with you that it doesn't sound as good as it could inside. Is a lack of interior acoustic treatment for controlling reverberation. Which is very different from uh control of sound transmission, they actually have to have entirely different properties. In a nutshell, if you want to absorb something, you wanna hold on to it, and the sound needs to pass through a material. Vibrate the structure and diffuse the energy, if you want something to stop sound, it needs to do the opposite, it needs to reflect off. And go back into the room, um. So typically, when it comes to uh treating spaces for pleasurable acoustics and for noise mitigation, there's a combination of both. The window plugs that you're talking about, that is a strictly exterior um sound leakage mitigation measure. Additionally, uh, inside, for the reasons that that you've mentioned, and just for the aesthetics and having good sound. We will do uh additional um sound quality treatment indoors, um. Which I I'm aware that there's um fire uh fire rating requirements from the fabrics that are used for such treatments. So we'll be, of course, happy to uh to go along with all requirements there, but but yes, that sort of uh interior treatment. Will help uh make it so that it doesn't have to be objectively as loud to sound. Loud and good.
Yeah, that'll help. Thanks.
Okay. So how could we phrase this? If we were to do it. The. If it was light. We would limit the light. Cause the 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 light exposure uh in a city ordinance says that light does not extend past your property. Now, sound is a different animal, but there is a. Reasonable amount of noise that the human can hear or not hear. And can transmit to certain levels. And I think we have to set the the property line as the. The extent of exposure, or the limit of where it could be. Does that, does that sound reasonable? We use the property line as the demarcation.
Yeah, sure, and if someone wants to dispute, say, light coming across, they have to.
Same, so that would be the same, that would be the same idea there. Um, the challenge we have is what are reasonable levels? And are those? Subjective.
Yeah, and as you know, a given frequency at a given decibel, change the frequency and the perceived loudness changes significantly. I also have a music degree, fun fact, so. Little bit of, no, I did not teach, I just just took the class for a semester, but it's really difficult to say a certain frequency. Or sorry, a certain sound level, because a certain frequency at that sound level could be absolutely imperceivable to the neighbors, or it could be absolutely. An option, depending on frequency, um. And unless we're doing like, uh, okay, play a sine wave at your median show level, and we're gonna go test it this month at the property line, sort of thing. Um, I don't know how to get like a really objective measure, if you have any suggestions for how to like objectively. Quantify that which is so qualitative in disruption, or as as we know, the ordinance specifies objectionable sound. I would be curious.
Yeah, the um. The uh subjective element of that I will, I will pass on commenting on, but in terms of. Making an objective measurement, um, there are different um. Uh, weighting metrics for uh D B S P L levels. Um, that uh take um frequency response into consideration, so um, there are. Um, s- standard measurement procedures that can be used to take those kinds of objective measurements.
Yeah, it's just, if if it requires standard procedures to be performed for enforcement, then I don't know. I don't know where that leaves us in terms of writing our special little law.
This is where we have to say, is it something that is easily?
Yeah.
Because enforcement or perceived violation. Is the difficult portion.
In a perfect world, we could. Set up a demo. Put the window plugs in, have the neighbors stand out online in the street, and set up a band. And or the sound system, and make the noise that you think would be the loudest. Um, and see how it is, you know, it may not be as objectionable, um. And I, for me, I really think it is, it's the sound is what is the crux of the matter. Necessarily what people perceive is what kind of people there will be. I think it's. But that's probably not feasible to do, a test like that, is it?
Uh, no, that that would put a pretty significant uh expense and burden on us prior to knowing.
Whether or not you're gonna be able to do it.
What do you do with those window plugs if we say no?
You know, you've had an objection, but, you know, I know the sound, and I I thank everyone for really focusing on that, but also. This is the place where they wanna keep it by their own admission, that forty nine, forty nine occupancy means if there's three or four bar staff or. Staff personnel there, minus the band, you're you're at forty people, forty people, there's no way it's viable, which I know this.
That is not our concern.
I know, but 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 the plausibility of a space like that being zoned by the zoning board of appeals or given a special permit. Is there a question? Here is absolutely on top.
It's also close to the board.
So, well, no, there was input before, so I object, I'll I'll put an objection out, because this is going back and forth, and that's not the way it works. And I know there's another sitting meeting, and I feel that's wrong too, but the uh, the 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 process here is that. You know, their whole group cannot be here, that's off.
That's not their intent.
That's not our problem.
Their intent is not to have the whole group there. If they want the whole group to meet at one point, they will find a place to do it that's suitable, that's not what's part of the discussion.
That was, that was not written in their their perspective.
It's not in the application. It's not in the application, we are, we are assuming.
They are, and so that, I mean, maybe I implied it. And you must have implied that they're only gonna have so many members.
Not every owner of Applebee's can fit an apple inside of it, okay, this is true. But yeah, and we, that that is. The the room, the building is owned, permitted use of forty nine P.
We have many bars with lower permitted occupancies in town, so the the idea that a bar of that size is not viable has been disproven.
Not as a performance venue, no, incorrect.
They, they're used as performance venues, but I mean, whether or not someone's playing in the bar doesn't.
But that's what they proposed our first meeting, so I I if you're arguing for them, I I feel that's a bias too.
I'm arguing for the other bars in town.
I have no qualms against the other bars in town, and I frequent them and patronize them.
Listen, I need to go, but I I wanted to weigh um your, this uh subjective evaluation of. Uh, noise, and because you brought up its comparison to light and keeping light on the property. Um, I've had to deal with that kind of recently, and and it's a very good comparison, because uh. You know, you can sound level, e- even if you direct all the lights on a parking lot straight down, which happened recently at the Fire Ants place. Um, and that solved the problem, the complaint, uh, you still have light drifting off, so there's a certain level of light. So you're not gonna stop noise at the property line, but with light complaints, I've worked in other communities. And and I wanted to say East Hampton is not alone in in this thing about noise and uh subjective language. Uh, objectionable to whom, you know, and stuff like that, so um, in another community, I got such a complaint. And I, just so you know, I, because there was no standard to really go by, I sent it to the uh zoning board of appeals. I mean, the person filed a complaint, um, uh, I sent a letter. Person said, what can I do, I said, well, you can appeal my uh decision on this, my order, cease and desist. And it went to the Z B A, uh, because uh. I figured that it's their call, any subjective language about like objectionable anything. That's for you, so it's a case by case thing, you would have to entertain a complaint and go through all of this again, and. So you really should, my recommendation is follow through with what you're saying, come up with some kind of standard, if you can.
Yeah.
Uh, North Hampton does that, is my understanding, they have a uh decibel light reading at the property line. If I get any complaints about any noise or nothing, you're gonna end up with it, you know, so it's gonna happen.
All right. So with that in mind. We need to come up with some way, some. Before we can, we, before we can even begin to create a decision, we need to be able to write. Something that stipulates what that. Reasonable level is.
Yep.
Unobjectionable.
Yep.
All of the verbiage that's in the ordinances, we need to be able to address that.
It's impossible to look at what some other towns.
And if if, you know. Apparently, North Hampton already has something in their, in their dossier there, you know. Is this, I think it it behooves us in order to get it right.
Yeah.
It behooves us to continue the meeting. And make the decision that will best benefit the neighbors and the applicant. I know you wanna be good neighbors. And I know your neighbors. Okay?
No, I think we appreciate your fairness.
Uh, I have to.
Your concern.
And you, you know, if if it was my next door, how would I want it to be? That's, that's where I stand. To, I have to be able to, you know, we represent the city of East Hampton, all of its residents. I think everyone here will agree with that, that we try to do our best for listen and to make a decision that is best for the residents of the city of East Hampton.
So it will be up to us in the next four weeks.
We have four weeks. To research, to figure out what people have done, how they've measured it, how we've made it, and and. You know, I and I will, I will ask. You all have Dylan's email address? If you have. Thoughts, proposals, things you've seen, okay, you have expertise far beyond sound, far beyond mine. Okay, my my expertise in sound is I'm losing it. Um, but, yeah, I I wanna make sure that we have something that is. Easily identifiable and agreeable.
Yeah, be careful whether you're trying to make a condition or you're trying to make a law, so I was like.
Here's how I look at it, and we don't have that authority, but if we can put it in a condition, and then we can say. City council. Make this law.
Yeah, we're not making a.
That's how I'm looking. Okay, because we need.
Until it's a law, I don't, you can't enforce it.
Well, the only way we have enforcement is by the fact that we have a condition in our decision.
Yeah, and also this, a certain level of trust that this group is more interested in. Following our recommendations and keeping everyone happy than seeing how close they can get to skirting.
Exactly, yeah.
So that helps, but yeah, it's.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, it's safe for me to assume, I would assume, if you're talking about putting a condition on. That you folks without a vote have already granted or or looking to grant this permit.
Nothing is granted.
Nothing is.
There have been no decisions. To see if we can do it fairly.
We wanna see if we, if we wanna see if we can do it fairly, and if we can agree that we can do it fairly. Then we would agree that we can do it.
It's so ambiguous, you know, that, to me, I would say vote it down and then go back to the city council and say, this is problematic for us. Um, you know, something needs to be enacted, there's no way we can enforce it, there's no way we can keep the neighbors happy.
We don't know there, you know, we don't know that, we don't know that there's no way. We don't know it's definite this way or that way.
I do know, I do know in Chicopee, because I do serve on the alcohol board, we've had outside music venues, maximum capacity, are you familiar with that?
So we have, we have heard your concern.
Well, I'm just saying that if you're talking about decibels, and we've talked all night, police cannot enforce it, I've gone through Losuns and Chicopee. Police cannot afford, even with decibel meters, they cannot enforce it, so it's gonna be a quality life problem for existing businesses and neighbors. What are you folks trying to do here, you're trying to let someone new come in, cause you're talking about building up the town, when you're knocking down the people that have been the foundation of this town. City, excuse me. That's my view, I'm entitled to it, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
May I just say?
Talking and discussing amongst ourselves. And at this point, I will ask board members to please, you know, give it thought. And at this point, we will continue the hearing, do we have a date for our January meeting?
We do. Uh, is. Twenty something. Schedule. January twenty fourth, that doesn't sound right. Yeah, it's the twenty second, okay.
January twenty second.
Mr. Chair, so between now and then, I am on vacation for two of those four weeks, you know, I will be out of the office, um, I'll be checking my emails as soon as I get back. And anything that the board or the public has, I'll be able to distribute, um. Between now and then, the board would like me to look into how to craft a condition for. How to mitigate noise at the property line within some reasonable level, and potentially look in avenues of enforcement. At the, yeah, reasonable. Reasonable levels, yeah.
If there's been any similar situations or similar applications in towns with no noise ordinance, you know, what did the the permit granting authority do to mitigate? Mitigate the situation?
Would the board also want to possibly coordinate a site visit, is that something the board would like to do?
I think we're, I'm I'm familiar with the site, yeah. I have not been in site since I was a massage school, but. I'm not sure, would we learn anything?
I don't think we can. All right, so do we need a motion of approval for continuance?
Yeah, we need a motion, Eric, can you?
I make a motion to set a continuance for the um. The special permit application for the music bar, required a special permit, as listed in table five one, retail and service one zero. For heavy cultural cooperation.
Yeah, all better? So moved, continued. I'll see you on the twenty second of January.
I make a motion.
Um, do we need to approve the meeting minutes or anything else on the agenda?
Yeah, just the minutes we tabled that.
Okay.
Yeah, because we gave.
Do we currently have any applications on this?
Nothing uh substantive, yeah. No, no, there's nothing, there was potentially variance, new or new variance, but it turns out there's been a blanket extension on variance.
Cool.
So the ones you granted are, they extended that one year period and they can do it, so.
All right.
You guys are off the hook, we're off the hook on that one.
You ever did? You ever did address?
Galley.
I did. I checked with uh the city attorney. There was, there's no issues with the arrangement, how they have it for an owner and however they want to lease it. Um. There's no issues.
Thanks for your time.
Circle of events.
Yeah. Um, one other question I did have, there was a variance that we issued.
I thought it was.
On Lyman, we have one part is a street. No, not, I'm sorry, not Lyman Street. Uh.
Love Field.
Love Field sixty sixty five.
With the rebuilding.
Yes.
That old.
And it was my understanding that that property was to be rebuilt for their own occupancy.
Hmm.
Anyway.
So was that not, he said it was uh.
First time sign in front here.
You didn't want it.
I just wasn't sure if we had, I I drove by.
I just, I just kind of went.
What's that?
Nothing we can do about it, though, eh?
I I don't think so.
No. Out of our, out of our.
Unless there's some specific condition in there, which I think even on that, that type of condition would be outside of this still. Um.
So I, so I.
Yeah. Did we like these?
Yeah, I approved the minutes, right?
Okay, motion to approve the minutes from the January November twentieth meeting.
Make a motion to approve those over twentieth.
Second.
All right.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Yes.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.